I'd like to get started, and I always wanted to use this thing. So this is my night to use it. I'd like to start off by calling to order in the approval of the minutes of January twenty, excuse me, February twenty-second. Do I have a motion?
I approve to adopt those minutes of February twenty-second.
Okay, we've got a second. Any discussion? No council discussion? Any public discussion? Nope. So I would like to get a vote. All in favor? Run us unanimous. Managers' report, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I believe Jennifer Pincus is here. Would you mind going up to the podium? And she would like to make a quick presentation to the council and the success of their last event.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pincus, and this is my friend Cheryl Lambert. And the two of us, in early February, created an online fundraiser called Feed the Love. We put our heads together and decided we need to find a way to get our community members active and moving, and also find a way to fill our hearts as well as our bodies, fueling our bodies, by creating a fundraiser to benefit the Community Food Pantry.
Yep, and we had people participate, and with the community generous donations, we were able to raise $3,000 for the food pantry in just about a month's time or so.
We had seventy families or so participate. It was a great success, and we hope to make this an annual tradition. So we've already presented the check, but, Bill, we've created a little poster for, you could maybe hang it up in the Community Food Pantry. And thank you for letting us donate.
We will.
Thank you. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks to both of you. As the president of the Food Pantry, I thank you a lot. So thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, the next item is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be, I emphasize, may be brought up, again, under new business for further council discussion. Mike?
Good evening, Mike Doyle. I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm up here on extended vacation. I lived in this area about, well, almost my entire life, except when I was in the Army. So I have a lot of interest in what goes on in Cumberland and Falmouth and the greater Portland area. Recently, the last board meeting, school board meeting, Peter Bingham made a comment about someone calling him a moron, and that was me. And I wrote an article for my website, falmouthtoday.me. It's up running right now. And the title is "A Moron Complains About Being Called A Moron: Peter Dingbat Bingham Objects To The Truth." Peter has had whatever mind he had before joining the Board of Morons has lost it, also known as MSAD-51. Let's review the bidding leading up to the moron description. They are too stupid to know that there was zero evidence to support their lies, yet they, Perrin, McGinnly, and Maskowits, went on to have lied at the board meeting and the council meetings about being stalked by Sean. I know this from being there in the presence of what was going on in the parkland, so I know he wasn't stalking anyone. They are too stupid to have read the board of, the rules for the Board of Education that they belong to. They're too stupid to read the Robert's Rules of Order or the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. They are too stupid to know that they can't control content at the public forum. Numerous SCOTUS decisions barring content restrictions. You can't bar any restrictions here also. They are too stupid to punish or fire an employee running the AV system at the board meeting. After he called Sean an a-hole, and Sean asked for an apology, he said "F you." Now, if he had said "F you" to me, I'd be using the F-word here. But he didn't say it to me, so I'm just going to use the initial "F you." No discipline, not fired, not dox some pay, not suspended. What's it like in this town where people can walk around as employees and tell taxpayers, "F you, you're an a-hole"? An a-hole for exercising his First Amendment rights to ask questions of what the school board is doing and how they're spending their money. This is not acceptable in the real world. Only in government can you see this. And I tell people, anytime you want to get the kids back in school, stop paying the teachers to stay home. They'll be in school the next day. They are too stupid to censure Ann Maskowit for going to Sean's house twice to demand the sign be taken down, an illegal request, without any description, excuse me, any discipline, except Sean had to file a criminal trespass complaint against Ann with the Cumberland Police. They are too stupid to stop wasting tax dollars with the equity solution, chasing a racist problem that doesn't exist in the two towns. And they are too stupid to realize that what most of the people in the two towns think about them. When moron Peter using a government forearm to espouse his religious trip to the Holy Land. So inappropriate, it defines moron by itself. My last sentence was, if you don't like being called a moron, stop acting like a moron. And that's my answer to Peter Bingham's comment about me calling him a moron. Stop being a moron. Now, I have a couple of minutes left here. I can't tell because the clock's not running anyplace where I can see it. Do I?
One fifteen, one fifteen.
I'd like to lead the pledge of allegiance to honor the troops working for us all over the world. If anyone would like to join me, you're welcome to stand up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please, for a second. I just think I'm going to stand up. Hi, my name is Greg Fryer. I live at 111 Bruce Hill Road. I have a different topic than the one we just heard about. So on, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, we read in the forecaster about the proposal to bring harness racing from Scarborough Downs to the fairground. As a first, I'd heard of it. I guess it's been in the works a while. I'm very sympathetic to the harness racing industry in Maine. And of course, there's a long tradition of racing at the Cumberland Fairground during Fair Week. This proposal, however, is to supplement Fair Week with another 21 weeks of commercial racing, and that's, I consider that to be no small step. Now, others may have different issues here, but I want to focus just on one. I want to focus on noise. At the 500-acre Scarborough Downs facility that was specially built, basically in the middle of nowhere, they could make as much noise as they wanted. At the fairground, there are 12 homes within 1,000 feet. Outside the fairground, there are 12 homes within 1,000 feet. That doesn't count the, I believe it's eight homes inside the fairground. Actually, I have those numbers wrong. It's a total of 21 homes altogether that are within the circle of, from the racetrack oval. So our place is not one of those. Our place at 111 Mowfield is about a half mile away, but during Fair Week, I can assure you that anyone sitting on our patio can tell you which horses led around the final turn and who finished in the top three. Paramutual horse racing is actually named as a permitted use in the fairgrounds overlay district, but before granting a permit for this commercial activity, the town, I believe, needs to pay attention to noise. So a few years ago, this town council approved Chapter 81, the farm-based special events, which limits sound to 60 decibels at the property line. The standards under Chapter 81 include all of those found for mass gatherings. Mass gatherings, as you probably know, is Chapter 162. And indeed, the stated purposes of both chapters, 81 and 162, are basically word-for-word identical. The mass gatherings ordinance dates back to 1979. It doesn't specifically deal with noise, except, other than to set an 11:00 PM curfew for events exceeding 5,000 people. But interestingly, Chapter 162 does regulate light. Says lighting shall not be unreasonably, shall not unreasonably reflect beyond the assembly area boundaries unless adjacent properties are uninhabited. Either way, though, under Chapter 162, quote, "Before a license may be issued hereunder, the town council shall hold a public hearing in order to review the application and determine the conditions required to safeguard the public health, safety, and welfare." There's no question but that under modern standards of public welfare are included protections against unwanted noise. In the Town Center District, for example, the sound limit is 75 decibels at the property line. I've already noted the 60-decibels limit that applies under Chapter 81. Even chickens are subject to noise limits. Chicken coops, under our code, must be maintained in a condition, quote, "That will not disturb the use or enjoyment of a butter's due to noise, odor, or other adverse impact." I don't actually know the specifics of the racing, gambling, and other hearty activities proposed to take place at the fairgrounds. I have to believe, however, that the sponsor can do better than the 1930s-style double-trumpet loudspeakers that currently convey race commentary and results. The Town Center Ordinance specifically refers to the use of modern acoustical technology. I don't know how much outdoor loudness is really needed for this particular activity. I don't know what kind of crowds are expected. But I bet that the use of modern directional microphones and loudspeakers can achieve the desired results without running 27 summer, ruining 27 summer days for neighbors and more than 29 more days in November and December. I do have, my wife, Joanne, wants to talk about Mowfield.
Yeah.
And so I just click that, and it'll move from one to the other.
Okay. I just wanted to show you, I've been, I think I'm still the only person that got the farm-based special events license, and I've worked very, very, very hard. We just, I've set my schedule for this year, so I had, I mean, we're booked for this year. We're half-booked for 2022. I obviously don't want to have the weddings ruined, especially during the actual ceremony when they're saying their vows. So I would very much ask for you to, you know, I have to be 60 decibels at the property line. I'm hoping that you can do the same thing for those races. And of course, we'll have a little bit of time to test. My first wedding isn't until June 26th. Kristy Littlefield is marrying one of the stories, so that, but we have time before that. I think that, I talked to Mike Chinkett today, and he's willing to work with me, but what I'm, and I know he will. I've given him my dates, and he tells me he will work with me, but he can't be there for, he told me there would be six to nine races every day over like a five, six-hour period.
Joanne?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We're near the five minutes.
Oh, me already?
Together, same subject, right?
Can I be a separate person from Greg?
I guess you can, yes.
That would be great. So, yeah, we're two people. I just, I'm going second. In any event, I wanted to just show you, like, this young lady will be getting married probably on 2022 at my place. We had a very high-end Walt, Disney-designed a line of wedding gowns, and it was photographed at our place in September. They used all my dahlias, and it's actually become, there's Pocahontas, it's the Disney princess gowns. This you will see in a magazine soon. This became the number-one post in the country for weddings. In 45 minutes, we got 8,000 likes. We've done all the flowers. My dahlia farm is now recognized to be one of the very best dahlia farms in the entire East Coast. So I have killed myself for this. This is Snow White in our woods. And I just, I just, I mean, I've worked so hard, and I'm just urging you to, you know, pay attention to the fact that I have a business that was pre-approved prior to this. And I know that Mike will work with me, but the reason I want you to set a limit on the decibels is he's not going to be there, and I don't, you know, he's not going to be able to be there every day for every race. So I just, right now, we can hear everything, and I'm a half a mile away. So we need, and he's willing to do this. He's willing to work with me, but I just want to make sure that if he's not there, I don't know who's going to be running those sound systems or anything. So that would be my big concern, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rebuttal? First of all, I like this couple. This is not against them, it's just the entire concept.
You know, there's a lot of houses that were built up by the Portland jet port, nice new ones, very expensive ones, and the first thing they started complaining about was the noise from the airport. This fairground's been here for a few years, and when you buy property within a half a mile or two miles of the fairgrounds, you're going to have some noise at some point during the year. So it's kind of like, you know, the chickens laid the egg already, and now we're complaining about the chickens laying an egg. I live in an apartment building down in Portsmouth, $2,500 a month for a two-bedroom, two-bath apartment. And the planes go over to the P's Airport, and the shadow passes right over my windows. I mean, you can sit in the living room and watch the plane go by, and the shadows goes right through my apartment. Now, can I complain about noise from airplanes when I rented the apartment under the flight path of the planes? I don't think so. And they run the refueling station for the Northeast corridor for military flights, so it's all the time, all days of night and everything else. So I think this is one of those things that, you know, the horse is out of the corral, and whatever happens noise-wise, if you buy a piece of property near a noise-generating facility, you have to expect some noise. Thank you.
Could I have a rebuttal for that?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to say, per the code, I mean, per our ordinance, we cannot have weddings during Fair Week, and I wouldn't want to. This is not Fair Week. I would not have bought a house across from Scarborough Downs and put in a wedding venue. So this is just something that's, I mean, maybe it's allowed, but I don't think they've ever done horse racing other than Fair Week, ever. So, of course, during Fair Week, we all expect that. This is just a new thing. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Joanne, no, it's not a new thing. It was every week during the summer thing, right up until the mid-'80s, maybe?
Okay.
Yeah, so just, that's just information.
That predated me, being in Maine, so.
Yeah, and it predated a lot of your neighbors as well.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this, there is no application before you yet. When there is an application, you will have a public hearing. Residents will have the opportunity to share that information and share it again with you at that time. I don't expect it, at least, it may be two weeks from tonight, but it could be as late as four weeks from tonight. So just wanted to let the full council know, we don't even have our first meeting with the applicant until Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Rick?
Thank you. Rick Doan for Catalpolane. It's not my topic, but I know Pete Bingham reasonably well, and it is disappointing and, I think unfair, to have to sit here in a council meeting and listen to names being bandied about. That's not the man I know, and I find it distasteful. I am here to talk to you tonight about marijuana. Some of my former high school classmates may know that I have some experience with that subject. And I find myself in a somewhat unique position tonight of arguing, to some degree, against it in the town of Cumberland. So we are, well, we have an abutting neighbor who fancies himself a medical marijuana grower. And when the standard was 12 plants, he had 12 plants, and when the standard was increased to 30, he has 30. There is now a bill before the legislature to take that standard from 30 to 60. And the problem that I have with it, that my family has with it, and my neighbors have with it, is that it smells. And it smells a lot, and it smells for a long time. So it's not a question of a week or two. It is a gradually escalating odor that begins sometime in the midsummer and concludes, at least in this particular operation, sometime in November when he finally harvests the last of his plants. We've talked to him about it. He's expressed a desire to work with us in terms of harvest routines and the varieties. That has not materialized. And it's not a small thing. We are probably 200 feet away from the border, property border, which he has tuck the plot hard against. And when somebody pulls into our driveway, if the wind is anything out of the east, the first thing they say is, "What's that smell?" It's essentially akin to a couple of families of skunks getting into bruhahas and having a grand old time, and it's pervasive. When the wind is blowing the wrong way, we cannot open our windows at night. It's just really, really unfortunate to have such a protracted and intrusive experience in what is basically a quiet residential neighborhood. The ordinance that you passed a couple of years ago in the registered caregiver overlay district specifically states that within those district boundaries, odor must be controlled at the property line. There is no such standard that I know of, that I've been told that it doesn't exist for the town as a whole. I have talked to various folks about it. I've talked to Chief Ramsey, I've talked to Bill Longley. I talked to the State Office of Marijuana Policy. They acknowledge there is an issue with odor, but there's no, currently, any plan that they could give me at the state level to try to regulate it. So what I'd like to do tonight is to ask you to consider having whatever committee or group of individuals might be appropriate to look at the ordinance and consider expanding the current protections that exist for the caregiver overlay district to the town as a whole, or at least to residential areas of which this is one. So I appreciate your consideration of that, and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Rick. Mike?
Hey, Rick. Before you go, Shirley and I and George are on the ordinance committee. I would encourage you to email us with any suggestions you have. And I think your concern is valid. I mean, I looked what happened up in the Gray Plaza. They had one building that was growing marijuana in it, and it seeped through the entire plaza. And it's just, it's smelly stuff, it really is. It's, he said, "Go do what you want on your property," but when it seeps over to my property, there's a valid concern. So I would suggest to you to email us what you're thinking, just kind of, we can start a dialogue on it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And hopefully, our representative Moriarty's taking notes.
Rebuttal on the comment about Peter. I have no animosity towards Peter, but he made a point of complaining about being called a moron at the school board meeting while he ranted on about his trip to the Holy Lands. And my point being is that if you look up in the Webster's Dictionary "moron," it's interchangeable with the word "imbecile" and "idiot." And I chose to use the word "moron" because I think it sounds less aggressive than "imbecile" and "idiot." But if you act like that, someone's going to call you a moron. And if someone's objecting to me calling somebody a moron, tell your friend Peter to stop acting like a moron. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sean? Or Bill?
Couple of things. One, I want to make a correction. There are no lights at the fairgrounds for racing. They were taken down a year or two ago, so there will not be any night racing because of that. There had been several years when there was racing all year round, as Shirley pointed out. And the other thing I wanted to just mention is the food pantry and my 4-H contributions. I know that Ronnie's been doing a great job at that, so has Tom, and want all the council to do that, to try and get $10 apiece from all the residents of the town for the food pantry, because we need that for the 4-H project. So thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Town Council. Sean McBride at Cumberland. I'm going to tie this all into your preview, so as I get toward the end, so stick with me. As many of you know, I filed dozens of Freedom of Access FOA requests over the last nine months with MSAD-51 School District as a result of finding out about the indoctrination of Greeley students with critical race theory. The more information I was provided by MSAD-51, the more hypocrisy I found. It's kind of like what, when you cut down a big old tree with a handsaw, you've got to make a dozen or more cuts, dozens and dozens of cuts. The more cuts you make, the more you see how diseased and hollow the tree is on the inside. I had to ask MSAD-51 for the same FOA request multiple times because they were unwilling to be forthright, as they knew I would communicate the information. Because of these disclosures, taxpayers are mad, parents are mad, and students are mad. MSAD-51 also can't seem to quite reply to requests without going through their lawyers. MSAD-51 pays nearly $100 per hour more, at $304 on average, than the town at Cumberland does on their legal contracted rate of $205 an hour. Know how I found that out? A FOA request. They've cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars a year because of poor negotiations and lack of diligence. So far, they've spent $26,000 of our hard-earned taxpayer dollars on keeping me from using my First Amendment rights to gain access to public information. Why? Because they know they're in the wrong, and they need to have their lawyer check on them rather than just providing the information. Instead of following the FOA law, the administrators of MSAD-51, specifically Superintendent Jeff Porter, Director of Finance Scott Poole, and School Board Chair Tyler McGinnly, have now constructively denied my recent FOA requests to find out all the taxpayer dollars spent on anti-racism training. I believe this number to be well upwards of $250,000. This type of training has been going on, teachers passing info down to students since at least 2019. My first, my FOA request about this was made on December 29, 2020, and weeks later, I was told I needed to pay $120 for this information. I paid $150 on January 29, 2021, as they also had me pay $30 for another request. I handed the check to Director of Finance Scott Poole personally. MSAD-51 then stated on 2/23/21, almost two months since the initial FOA request, that over the next several months, we'll be extremely busy with annual budget prep, union negotiation, and pandemic issues, as well as usual business in the office. Therefore, we'll be unable to provide records you requested until after the budget is approved. And that record request would be provided on July 15, 2021. So I made the request in December, and they won't give it to me until July. After the MSAD-51 budget to increase another budget year 5% or so in a brand-new $40 million school, after the school board members are voted in by the public. By main law, this is not reasonable, and the timing of this is against the law, especially with the school board seats of Van Maximoich and Margot Harrington up for reelection in June in Cumberland. These are currently members who advocate anti-racism training for your children. As a note, Jeff Porter, Superintendent, was reprimanded by the Assistant Attorney General on 7/29/20 for stating that I should be a better parent and go along with whatever the school's pitching and not make any waves. Furthermore, they are withholding public information from attending the secret Equity Leadership Steering Committee meetings with no viewing, without a new link each meeting, no agenda, no minutes, and no recordings of that meeting. MSAD-51 should have no political stance on any actions occurring in the United States. They should not be working to rewrite history, English, social studies, and mathematics. All efforts there are underway already at Greeley and MSAD-51. They also recently changed their public comment policy after not following it for four years. After four years of not following it, and four school board meetings for me to get them to follow it, it took them four months to change it, and they didn't tell anything, they didn't tell anybody about it. They never did. They never did a public reading, they never told anybody what they were going to do. But now, you can no longer comment on items before a vote with Greeley using 70% of your Cumberland property tax bill. MSAD-51 does not want to hear you. They want to listen, they don't want to answer questions. Things need to change, and this is indeed a Cumberland Town Council meeting, not just an MSAD-51 thing. The town of Cumberland writes two huge checks to MSAD each year, and the rich get richer, while the 100 employees of the town of Cumberland didn't get a raise this year, to balance the mill rate, just so the MSAD-51 teachers and administration can get their usual 3% pay raise. MSAD-51 has zero incentive for fiscal responsibility, and it's time for this Town Council to start asking questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anybody else?
Good evening again. My name is Jennifer Pinkus, and I am a resident of North Yarmouth and a parent of two students in the MSAD-51 School District. I just want to thank the school administration and the school board for all of their efforts and work during this incredibly trying and difficult time with respect to pandemic issues and implementing an anti-racist educational curriculum to help our students better understand the issues facing our country today. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Anybody else? Seeing none, I will close the public discussion and move on to manager's report.
I think we're moving to legislation and policy. I'm just going to get some slides ready for Mike Schwint, who's first on our.
We're going to change things a little bit. Brenda's actually going to read each of the items for legislation and policy, and if she could do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 21-022, to hear a report from the Lands and Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Brenda. Mike?
Mike, are you good with the slides and the mouse? I can go over there and do it if you want me to, but I'll miss you. Just click it on the left. If you need, get stuck, just you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. I am Mike Schwint, the Chair of your Lands and Conservation Commission. I thank you for the opportunity to update you on the things your commission and the subcommittees have been involved in recently. Recognizing the full disclosure would take considerable time, tonight, I want to just give you an overview of what the commission and the subcommittees have been up to and how it kind of fits in with SFEER's responsibility. We're also going to ask, be asking you for your advice and counsel as we set our work plan for 2021, so that the priorities we work on are aligned with what the town needs and wants. The commission has been in existence for many, many years. Some of its major earlier activities, including trail building, which included the town forest, invasive identification, both plant and insect, initiation of forest management plans, vernal pool mapping, and a northeast cotton tail study. Most recently, in 2018, the underlying ordinance governing our commission was rewritten with the significant involvement of councilors Guber and Bingham, substantially changing our roles and responsibilities. 2018 revised ordinance specifies the structure and the duties of the commission and the subordinate subcommittees. The commission itself is to have at least seven members who are residents of the town. Right now, we have nine plus two subcommittee chairs who are participating as well. So, it's a good group, 11 people. It has good institutional memory in that we have three people who've been on there for many, many years. We also have a good mix of professionals on the rest of the people. I, on the other hand, am just the figurehead sitting in the chair at the top, directing traffic from time to time. The commission is the link between the subcommittees, who do a lot of the work, and the Town Council. When the subcommittees have a request or want to make a motion to approve something, it goes from the subcommittee to the commission and then up to the Town Council. The ordinance provides for two standing subcommittees. The first, the Forestry and Natural Resources. The second one being recreational trails. In addition, the ordinance provides that we can establish, the commission itself can establish, subcommittees, and we have. The first was a land assessment subcommittee. The second one, dealing with invasives. The third is the climate action, and the fourth is the farmland assessment. The terms for these subcommittees, these ad hoc subcommittees, are essentially for the time of the ad hoc commission. To help put things in a little bit of perspective, Cumberland owns over 1,000 acres of land. Most people are familiar with the larger parcels, Rhines, at over 300 acres, Knight's Pond, Twin Brooks, the town forest right out here with 130 acres with the attached piece next to it, Greeley Woods, Broad Cove. Valhalla adds another 153 acres to that. Yet, there are a number of smaller pieces, and this excludes the lands where we have less than outright ownership on that, which we're also responsible for. One estimate of our standing timber on our lands is about 1.3 million. 1.3 million. It's not exactly chicken feed. Our trails in town primarily are on town-owned property, but there's also a bunch of trails that run across private property. So, part of what we're doing there is trying to manage the relationship between the landowners, the people using the trails, and how best to make all these things fit together. If you recall last summer, or last spring, when everything was going south on the COVID stuff and the weather, our surrounding towns shut their trails down. Cumberland didn't. Our trails got tremendous amount of use. They got beat up quite a bit. But the good thing is, we were able to keep them alive, keep them used, by repairing them, creating some new trails. And so, I think we have some of the best trails in our neck of the woods. One question I've asked, but I haven't got an answer yet, is how many miles of trails do we actually have? I'm hoping that when we finish the GPS project that's underway on the trails, we're going to be able to answer that part. There's got to be, I don't know, I guess, 20-some-odd miles of trails, easy. When you look at the ordinance and compare to what we've been doing, there's a lot that we have done, but even more that needs doing. We have significant work ahead. For example, Section 3015 describes the purpose and duties of the commission. Paragraph A says we are to report to the Town Council regarding the condition, status, or current use of any parcel of land owned by the town. So far, we've done some of that. The second half of that paragraph talks about apprising you about the, any parcel of land in which the town has acquired an interest less than ownership, including rights of way easements, rights of development, options to purchase, or any other permissive or conditional use of any type. We've done precious little in that area. Similarly, when you look at the dozen other itemized things we are to do, we've accomplished only a few. That's a reality. The other realities, we're working with a total volunteer group. So, it's going to take some time to get caught up with all the things that are out there needing doing. But we're going to talk more about that later. When you look at the forestry subcommittee, what they've accomplished, we've made good roads, and what needs to be done, we still have a ways to go. The major accomplishment there is getting the guiding principles approved, which was brought to you several months ago, and you signed off on those. We thank you for that. We've also got a number of the forest management plans underway or completed. Additionally, we've got the timber harvests underway at Twin Brooks, and that's also part of what we have to be involved in. When you look at trails activity, you can see much has been accomplished, but there's much more to do. Again, you adopted the trail guidelines this year, or, excuse me, it was last year. They serve as the basis in how we do trails and plan for the future. During the last year, where, like I say, everybody in the neighborhood has closed down, we didn't, because we had some good planning going into those trails. Spent a lot of time harvesting, hardening the trails going through Rhines Forest and Greeley Woods, and they're in good, pretty good shape. Mr. Chairman, I hope that these two groups will have an opportunity to spend some time with you in the near future, so that you get a better picture for what each committee, subcommittee has been doing, as well as the people who have been doing the heavy lifting on there. I believe what they do and how they go about accomplishing their goals is important to all of us, because it impacts on where things are now and will well into the future. As I mentioned earlier, we elected to establish several ad hoc committees. The first was to develop a means of assessing lands of significant conservation value that may become available, which is one of the tasks we're assigned to do. Here, we considered a number of the attributes and the relative value to develop a matrix to rank the parcel for comparative purpose. For comparative purposes, we assessed the town-owned parcels, see if the matrix made sense. And we've took a look at that and figured out some weights and how to put into place, and we gave you that document back in June of 2019. Incidentally, I was contacted by a town in another state, they also wanted our matrix. So, we did send it on to them. What they did with it, I don't know yet, but they didn't come back and say it's the worst thing they ever saw. So, I think it makes a little bit of sense. So, it's going, we think it's going to be a good tool for taking a look at potential properties with a significant conservation value that may be available. The second one, we established dealing with invasives, dealing with the management, preservation, and maintenance of upkeep of properties. As you know, we have many invasives here, but they have not made a significant effort to bring them under control. Some cutting in the town forest occurred, spraying had been done, we sprayed some along the road, and we also coordinated a meeting with several of the other towns around here. But the overall impact, when you look at it, was pretty minimal. Last year, we took another run down the roads. Sam and I drove the major roads of the town, looking for the knotweed and purple loose strife, just two of the 30-some-odd invasives that are identified in the state, just so we could get some of the spraying underway on that. I'm kind of looking forward to see where greens up this spring, to see how effective that was. Some of the knotweed looked pretty sad after a very short period of time, which is a good thing. It's too much of it around. Purple loose strifes, different parts of the town just getting started. Seems like there's more on the western end of the town than there is on the eastern end, but it's still out there, and it spreads very easily. This winter, we made an earnest effort to identify the worst infestations in the town forest with an eye to cutting some of them down, spraying for next year, and then planting native plants in the future. Bill went out and did some photography out there. If you walk through the town forest, this was not an uncommon sight. It's so thick, you can't even see anything through there. It's buckthorn. Lots of buckthorn. More buckthorn. You can't walk through there. This is the town-owned prodosaurus, hungry little beast. The gentleman who runs that thing, he's got a fine touch. I'm impressed. That's what it looks like when they've had a few, a little bit of time to spend on there. The jungle, if you will, is reduced to sticks on the ground. You can see that now. The plants that are in there have a chance, hopefully, the native plants have a chance to grow. If not... See, he's got a fine touch getting around the big trees like that, able to get those out of there. But you, but see, the problem with that is, the young things that should be coming up from the bottom are crowded out by the buckthorn. There isn't a chance for them to grow. So, the next steps that we're looking at out there is, where all this was ground down this year, we're going to allow the plants to grow waist-high over the summer. Late August, early September, going to spray them again with glyphosate on the plant leaves. This is the time of the year when the plants are starting to suck stuff down into the roots to get ready for the winter. That's the time to put the spray on them. Plants are absorbing food for the winter and will be killed with chemical. Monitor in year two, recut and retreat in year three, monitor year four, and replant in year five. One of the challenges, of course, is going to be coming up with the type of native trees or bushes or whatever to put in there to get going. And, you know, what we want to do is get some plants started in there, so that they're running ahead of the seeds that are laying in the ground before they sprout. So, that's going to be a challenge, but it's going to be a challenge, it's going to be a good challenge. We can go out to the town forest in five years and see bushes coming out there, maybe high bush blueberries, or whatever is the right thing to put in there. I don't know yet. We're still doing research on that. It's going to look a whole lot better out there, and it's going to be actually useful to that. And maybe when we get all done, that cotton tail study that they did a few years ago, where they now can, you can't find cotton tails from what I hear, maybe they can find a way to come back here. Although, I did hear a rumor that there is one out there. So, I don't know the answer to that for sure. The Climate Action Plan recently completed its Phase 1 report, and that report was provided to you and to MSAD-51. That document, to be supplemented in about a year with the Phase 2 report, can go a long ways towards positioning our town for the future on environmental issues. I understand that report is tentative on your agenda for the next meeting. The Farmland Assessment Subcommittee, currently in its infancy, can and should have a significant impact on the conservation of our land and maintaining the rural character of our town. Having grown up on the high plains of North Dakota, where the only trees you saw were the ones you planted, and fields of 100 acres are pretty small, it's a different environment out here than it is there, but it's a challenge here, and I enjoy it. And so, I'm hoping to learn a lot as we go through this. But more on that as we go along. Mr. Chairman, I've mentioned some of the things we have done, but it's also important to note some of the things we have not done. Public information. People need to know what we're doing and why we're doing it. We're dealing with the land, the natural resources, the scenic views, the open spaces. These are the things the citizens of our town own. They should know what we're doing with it. We need to get the minutes on the websites and that sort of stuff, which is another piece of that. We did offer large landowners a session in 2018 about working with the forest, but the session for 2019 was canceled because of COVID. But we did manage to get the 2018 session put out on the web, so now people can still access that part. Our trails, again, one of our better-kept secrets. We're going to be spending a lot of time working on that. Many people having questions on invasives, and most people don't have good answers to it right now. We're hoping that what you saw right there is going to start providing some of those answers to us. They're all over. But I don't want this to be all gloom and doom, because it's not. What I see it, in many respects, we're just getting started. Instead... Instead, we have things that we talked about, that are simply opportunities for more people to step up, get their hands busy, and self, start helping solve issues and problems that are in our town, making it better in the long run. Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, I propose the town council include on future agenda items, opportunities for the standing committees to come in and give you a talk, and fill you in in more detail with what the things that are going on. We also want, want your advice and counsel when we finalize our work plan for the coming year. I expect the final draft to be available shortly after our April 7th meeting. So with that, with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time, and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mike, I gotta tell you, it's, it's a terrific report, thank you so much. It's amazing. Anybody from the council? Any questions, comments? Mike, can you do me a favor? I, I was late the other night getting on to the Conservation Commission, and the minutes went out today.
Right.
And Ellen had me down as absent. Can you, Steve, you can do something about that?
Too late.
A big team for turning.
Indeed.
Tom, one of the things that I think Mike is asking for in a very polite way is the Climate Action Plan, which is extremely important document to our community. Most communities in the state now are asking for a copy of it, so, you know, it's good to be imitated, but never duplicated. So I think, I think the next meeting, they're gonna need probably a half hour to forty-five minutes in presentation and Q and A, because there's a lot of detail there that we should talk about. Mike touched, tried to touch on a lot of things tonight.
Sure did.
But that's a very important document that is going to require some policy direction from this council in the, in the near future. And I think it's, you've got Denny and Riva that can give you a lot of good information, and people that have been doing this for a long time, so I'm hoping with your indulgence that we could get that on the agenda, and I think people at home would also be pretty impressed with what we as a community are doing, and the volunteers in our community, and the effort that they have put forward in this plan, so.
I agree.
Pretty impressive.
Shirley? Allison?
I was just gonna say, I, I second what, what Bill just said, but I think also having the opportunity, the amount of work that happens from a volunteer standpoint, and having that opportunity to kinda talk through what happens, and also be able to solicit when you need more help, so I think timing that. But also, you kinda mentioned also your broader committee, Lands and Conservation Committee Plan, and kinda prioritization, and having the opportunity to talk us through that, and I think that, that is also, would be time well spent, however that's sequenced. Just because I know you have a lot of folks that are very passionate, and I think having them feel like they're getting some focus from all of us, or at least prioritization, right, of, we can't do necessarily everything all at the same time, and so making sure we're all on the same page with them as, as, as you're trying to kinda move everyone forward.
I agree.
I can recognize that that would be helpful.
These are all their plans, and they're eager to get started on them, but we gotta make sure we're heading in the right direction. Thank you. Mike, thank you. Any other, other, other questions from? Mike, thank you so much, appreciate it. Brenda, you wanna do the next item, please?
Item 21-023, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a zone change request to change up to 70,000 square feet of the lot located at 222 Gray Road, tax map U20, Lot 66, from the Village Center Commercial Zone to the Village Office Commercial One Zone as recommended by the planning board.
Thank you, Brenda. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just trying to bring the slides, the slides up so that you can see where this is. But this comes to you tonight with a unanimous recommendation from the planning board that was sent to you, that was sent by you to them, to hold a public hearing and come back with a recommendation. Tonight, their recommendation is to accept it as proposed, which, I'm just pulling up the agenda so I can describe it in a little bit more detail, is essentially to zone, rezone approximately 70,000 square feet of the current Board Barn property. And, yeah, that's not a great picture of it, but we'll, we'll try to zoom in a little bit. And this is basically a piece of property, this where it says VCC would be where the Board Barn is sitting, and this piece right next to it is what we're looking to rezone. Essentially, what it'll be is VOC one. VOC one is where Emerald Common is located, it is a rental property, Andy, owned by Andy Hagerty. Andy will be building four additional rental units at ground level on that property. He basically heard from many of his tenants that, right now, you park underneath the building, and you go up a flight of stairs to get to the actual apartment, so it's, it's, some people had trouble with stairs, they felt one, first four units would be great, and he's fallen through with it. So to do that, he needed the additional land. What'll happen to this piece, which is unique, is that it'll remain as part of essentially a buffer for the rest of the residential neighborhood, which, which I presented on your behalf to the planning board that evening. So I think it's a, a win-win for the town, it adds to the rental properties that we are in need of in our community, and it also gives the existing community quite a bit of buffer there from the rest of the neighborhood. So that item in here is before you, and it requires a public hearing tonight to vote on the zoning change.
Thanks, Bill. Any comments from the council? Seeing none?
Bill, remind me too, that parcel's also wetlands, right? So from a development standpoint?
Yeah, thank you. The front half of the parcel, which is along Route 100, is primarily wetlands, so there's very little we could do for, with it. The town did, however, acquire a drainage easement from Old Gray Road back to Route 100, which will allow us an outlet for the water, which is pretty much trapped in that ledge. If you've been up Old Gray Road, it's in pretty tough shape, and it does, it does need some work, and this will give us an opportunity to allow the drainage from that hill to go somewhere.
Shirley?
I believe these are four single-bedroom units?
Right. The, that piece will be going to the planning board as a site plan review, but that's what Andy has proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Tom? Want a motion? Mike?
I think the, as you know, initial, the initial proposal on this property, I was against, I didn't wanna remove any more commercial space off of Route 100. Thing I like about this, we're not really doing that, we're taking the wetlands. The property that Mr. Hagerty has right now is, all, all the rentals are 55 and above, and it's not adding additional burden to the school system, it's just giving people a place to live, so I'm supportive of this proposal.
This is a public hearing, does anybody have any comments? Seeing none? Bring it back to the council.
I'll give you a motion.
Yes, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the zone change request up to 70,000 square feet of the lot located at 222 Gray Road, tax map U20, Lot 66, from Village Center Commercial VCC Zone to the Village Offal, Office Commercial One, VOC One Zone, as recommended by the planning board.
Second. Ron, do we have a second?
Second.
Bob? Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda?
Thank you.
Brenda, you wanna do the next item?
Item 21-024, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on proposed amendments to Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, to add agriculture-related language as recommended by the planning board.
Mr. Town Manager?
This pretty much will complete our, our big push for agricultural uses being exempt from a lot of our cumbersome process that we have to go through to build new construction. Farmers have historically struggled with this because of the cost and the time involved, and we had, we had a meeting with them right here in this room, pre-COVID, and I think it, it was a pretty eye-opener, pretty much an eye-opener. And the council basically said, let's fix this, and let's, let's figure out a way that agricultural uses can be streamlined through the process. We're not trying to make it that no one has to follow rules, but what we're trying to do is basically make it so that if it's in concert with a farming and agriculture operation, that staff can review it at the staff level, notify the neighbors, and agricultural uses can continue to thrive in our community. I think with this ordinance, we do that, it gives the planner the flexibility that if it seems like somebody's trying to sneak something in under the guise of agriculture, but it really looks like a commercial operation, she can bounce it up to the planning board, no questions asked, that's all on her. So we do have that safety net, so if somebody's coming, trying to circumvent the rules, calling it an agricultural use, it's not gonna happen. So I'm fairly confident, the planning board was very happy with the changes that went back and forth between the council, and tonight, what's before you is kind of, I think, a positive recommendation from the planning board, unanimous, to support the language in the new site plan ordinance.
Thank you, Bill. Shirley?
I just wanna add on to what Bill said, this has been going back and forth for a while, and since the planning board made two recommendations that I think would be fine with the ordinance committee, looking for a nod back and forth, but one was just how we phrase the term, over 6,000 square foot, to change that to say a new structure that is over 6,000 square foot in size. And then their recommendation, we had given a suggestion that they would have, the farmers would have five years to begin a project, but what they recommended is that we give some leeway with one-year, one-year extensions, so the town planner can grant unlimited one-year extension, so that progress is still being made forward. And then that would be maybe one indicator that would say, hey, that's not really agricultural use, let's take a look at this close, more closely, so.
Thank you, Shirley. Any other comments by the council? This is a public hearing, do you have any comments, anybody from the public? Seeing none? I would ask for a motion. Shirley?
I move to amend Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, to add agricultural-related language as recommended by the planning board.
Do we have a second? Ron, second? Further discussion? Bob?
My only concern with this is the unlimited extensions. I'm reminded of the guy who built a garage on Wind Road 20 years ago, and it still hasn't been finished. It's found, mind you, not covered. It's, I just wanna raise that issue, if, if, I'll, I'll vote for it, but I, I, I am uncomfortable with unlimited extensions.
Well, I think what, I, and I think they are, they were concerned as well, because they had, the way it was previously written, it was, you had five years to start the project and 10 years to finish it, and that's not enough forward momentum for the planning board. So they have the same concern, it's just they're coming at it in a different way.
Thanks, Shirley. Thanks, Bob. Good question. We have a motion by Shirley? Do we have a second? Maron? Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? Brenda, go ahead.
Item 21-025, to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation, proposed amendments to Chapter 315, Zoning, Section 76, Permits and Fees, C, Demolition Permits, as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Brenda. Bill?
Mr. Chairman, the ordinance committee looked at this and proposed essentially one sentence to the entire ordinance, which was, the historical society shall be contacted upon submission of application. That was just basically to give them a courtesy call, to say, there's a demolition permit, here's the owner, contact them if you wanna make any arrangements. And the town attorney came back with this, but basically about a half a page. I get why they do this, I understand, it's kinda to protect us from ourselves sometimes, but it essentially does the same thing, it gets a little bit more wordy into, you know, I guess, personally, I think we get to the same place, but we basically sense she is responsible in responding to you directly, this was her recommendation to bring forward, it just adds a little bit more, I think, clarity in her mind to, to the language, and we basically left it to you to decide which way you wanna go. No offense in authorship either way, short and sweet, sometimes doesn't save the day, but that's okay, there's reasons why we have a town attorney, and I think, like I said, she tries to protect us from ourselves. Sometimes we do make two things too easy because, because of litigation, so anyway. I don't, I don't see either one being any different, but I understand where she's coming from with relations to the utilities and service connections, this is already done in number two, and this whole application for a use permit, et cetera, this is kind of already what we have in the ordinance today, but I think it does add a little bit more clarity, I guess, to demolition permits, that from essentially three sentences to essentially four paragraphs. So again, that's, that's your call, I think both are fine, both get to the same place, but the intent of one was to make it really easy, the other one was to make it legal, so that's where we're at.
I think she was looking to match the numbers under the letters, you know, A has two items, B has three items, C has, yeah, it's all about outlining, right?
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Shirley, I don't think we should subjugate our egos to the conclusion of the town attorney.
Especially with attorneys.
I vote for simplicity.
I, I don't care about, I don't care either way, really.
This is a public discussion? Steve, do you have anything?
He's gonna go with the attorney side, I'm just wagering, right? I'm just saying upfront.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everybody, Steve Moriarty from 12 Oak Street, and tonight, I'm before you wearing my hat as Chair of the Cumberland Historical Society. It's interesting, I didn't see this item on the agenda printed in the forecaster, so I didn't realize you were taking it up tonight, but was prepared and thought it might be coming up pretty soon. Very simple, several months ago, some board members said, you know, occasionally buildings are demolished of historic value, we learn about them after the fact, before we have a chance to take pictures and try to preserve some of the heritage for the town. We'd like to be simply notified ahead of time, and I approached Bill about it, and we finally worked our way forward to the ordinance committee, and it's very, very simple to, a, a, the zoning ordinance requires a demolition permit, when someone applies for such a permit, I assume that's a public record, so that if somebody came from the Historical Society down here once a week, they could find out what had been filed anyway. All this does is require Bill Longley to give me a phone call, or send an email and say, hey, you know, this 200-year house is proposed for demolition, end of story. Then it's up to somebody in the society to determine whether or not they want to request permission to enter the land to take pictures, or simply take pictures from the road, or maybe go into the interior if there's something of artistic or historic significance inside, and preserve it before the demolition takes place. There's no possibility for liability on the, on the part of the town here at all, it's simply notification of the existence of a public record anyway, so that's really all, it's as simple as that.
Makes sense to me.
I was gonna say, the one sentence I thought was good in Alyssa's, more of if someone was reading this, that they didn't get spooked by like, oh gosh, I have to notify the Historical Society, was her sentence where it says, this provision shall not be construed to create a rate of approval or denial of the application for a demolition permit by the Cumberland Historical Society, that it is just a notification, just saying. That part I liked. That part I liked.
Well, of course, I was formerly an attorney.
Put your other hat on.
Sort of understand where Alyssa's coming from, but you just don't need to worry about it. It's, we have, the society has no authority whatsoever on the town's enforcement and maintenance of its ordinances, and it's just a heads up. That's all.
Thanks.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Mike.
Mr. Chairman, I move to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation, proposed amendments to Chapter 315, Zonings, Section 76, Permits and Fees, and C, Demolition Permits, as recommended by the ordinance committee.
I'll second.
Shirley says second.
Oh, that was self-serving.
If I could third, I would.
I was just trying to get out of George.
Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda?
Tom, I have a question of the manager, I think, before we move on to the next item. Bill, let's say somebody in town has owned a piece of property, been in their family for 100 years, I'm just pulling a number out of the air, and they decide that they want to sell it to a developer, and the town deems that this is a historical building.
We have no historical building ordinance.
Okay, and that was my question, because I'm just curious, I mean, I did...
No, it's really a courtesy. Bill has been doing it for a while, just to let them know, and truly, Steve is right. All they do is call the guy up and say, hey, can we take some pictures? And they have their own insurance, that arrangement is between the building owner and the Histor- we have nothing to do with it. All we do is give them a heads up, it's coming, they got 10 days to get out there, and after that, on day 11, it may not be there to take pictures of, so that's typically what happens.
Thank you.
Item 21-026, to authorize the transfer of the Sweetsor Fund currently held by the town to the Historical Society.
Mr. Town Manager?
Well, this is kind of interesting. The town essentially holds two trust funds right now for the Historical Society. One, the Sweetsor Fund, and the other, we call the Historical Society Fund, because it used to be referred to as the Merrill Fund, and there's several Merrill Funds, some are for the library and some are for the Historical Society. So, we named it so we wouldn't get confused, the Historical Society Fund. This one, however, allows for the Historical Society to manage the funds. In 1984, when the state went to probate, for some reason, we were given the monies, and we basically put it in our investment portfolio, and it, the original principal amount was $43,975.25. Today, it's $48,219. Now, that's a terrible job in managing money, but that's not all the money. So, I think a few years back, probably 20 years, maybe almost 20 years, there was money taken out to help shore up the building at one time, when they did some work on the sills in the foundation area, and I think there was somewhere around $16,000 to $18,000 taken out. So, that's why you don't see a huge growth in these funds, not even we are this bad at growing money. So, today, it's a little over $48,000. It's exactly $48,219.58 as of the end of February, February 28th. We are able to transfer that money to the Historical Society for them to manage. Pete Wilson, myself, Helene, and Steve Moriarty met, we went over their desires to manage that, and I said, really, the only thing I need is a letter from the attorney saying, advising you that you can do this, and your authorization tonight to transfer the money. So, Steve is here representing the Historical Society. Pete Wilson is out of town, he is the treasurer, he's the one we've been working with pretty intimately, and he's done a great job in basically getting everything meticulously done. He's done a great job for the Historical Society. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, as would Steve, but tonight is really just the authorization to transfer the funds.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none? Steve?
Thanks again, Tom, and I'm back again, wearing the same hat. Christine Sweetsor-
Which hat is that again?
Chair of the Historical Society. Thanks, I had to think about that for a minute. Christine Sweetsor was the widow of Harland Sweetsor, and passed away at some point in 1984. In her will, she was very generous to the town, giving one-tenth of her residual estate to the town itself for the benefit of the library, and another one-tenth to the Historical Society for purposes of maintenance of a headquarters building and so forth. So, it's clear that the money given to the town is, in fact, the town's to own and manage. But for reasons which no one can recall, and for which there really are no records, the money given to the society was kept by the town, has been adequately managed by the town in all the years since. And it just sort of came to our attention as we began looking at some of our assets and seeing, you know, what was the truth behind the scenes, that this particular request was actually directly to the society itself. And that board members began questioning, well, can't we simply manage the money that was given to us directly and not rely on the town to do it for us? And the consensus was, yeah, we can do that, we can open a checking account or some other conservative investment vehicle and take care of it and not burden the town any further. So, that's what the board voted to do, and as Bill indicated, we had a meeting about the whole thing, and it's really very straightforward, and Alyssa agrees that the transfer can be made from the town to the society. But I will tell you that I certainly agree that the society is bound by the terms of the will and can only use the money for expenses associated with the maintenance of the headquarters building as opposed to general use purposes.
Thanks, Steve.
Good deal.
Any other, this is a public discussion, anybody have anything else? Thank you. Want to ask for a motion? Maron?
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize the transfer of the Sweetsor Fund currently held by the town to the Historical Society.
Second.
George, second? Further discussion from the council? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? Brenda, you want to do the next item?
Item 21-027, to authorize the use of year-end excess revenue funds not to exceed $170,000 for the installation of barriers at each public railroad crossing and to establish quiet zones for all rail crossings in Cumberland.
Thank you, Brenda. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of show you what we're looking at, here's a photo of what a barrier would actually look like. You see, they're fairly narrow in size, a sign on each end of it to basically stay to the right of the barrier. And essentially, when these gates come down, there's no opportunity for a car in line to go around the ends of the gates, and that's essentially why it's there. Normally, in very busy cities, you'll see quad gates. Those gates are now $1 million per crossing, that's something we shouldn't have to do. But the barriers will allow cars to basically stay in line and keep in line and not try to skirt around the ends of them. So, we are trying to get a quiet zone established, the council voted seven zip just a few years back to do that. Then, we had it funded in our last, our 2021 budget until COVID hit, and when COVID hit, all our capital expenses were tabled for a year. And we have done very well in our budgeting this year, in our expenses and our revenues, and I believe we have enough money in our fund balance to take that from end-of-year revenues and get started to at least start bidding that and getting ready for construction. If we wait till July 1st, when our budget is approved, halfway through the construction season, and trying to get into people's schedules is difficult. So, my request tonight is to get the $170,000 for funding for the three quiet zones that are on public road crossings. We have included in our application the fourth rail crossing at Muirfield. Muirfield is a private crossing. The easiest way to say this is they have no rights, they really don't, with the railroad and with the federal railroad, and they are subject to almost arbitrary types of rules. What we will end up probably having to do is try to petition our congressional delegation to assist us with establishing Muirfield as a quiet zone, because Falmouth has a quiet zone all the way through their public crossings, we would have the same quiet zone, essentially it goes from Portland to Brunswick, is one quiet zone, so how could you say that this one crossing, you know, impacts the rail service? One thing I will share with you that's a little bit concerning is that we had a hearing as was required by the railroad last year with the MDOT, the railroad, the town, the railroad didn't show up, so it wasn't the railroad, but the DOT, the town, and federal railroad came, and there was no real mention of Muirfield about, you know, having to do anything more than really put delineators on the centerline pavement. Now, they are basically saying that there will probably be some more things they have to do around the tracks, if you've been down there, you'll see, I believe there are actually some cart, golf cart crossing paths there, associated there as well, that may have to be changed, I'm not sure. But the big thing that federal railroad told me when I talked to them last week was the road would have to be a public road, or else they wouldn't even be considered for a crossing, and that DOT would have to approve the crossing, the rail crossing. That's never come up, and again, we've sat in many meetings with DOT. So, I don't know where this is going, to be honest with you, but I would say, let's move forward with the public, let's get it in the application, and let's see what happens next. This will give me and my staff the ability to get this out to bid, get it maybe constructed in May or June, in a hole in somebody's schedule versus trying to get people to bid on something in July or August, that's just not going to be easy to facilitate. So, I can, we put a pile of these slides in just to show what we did in 2019, just to show the three miles of rail that are in Cumberland, and that, at the very bottom of the picture is where Muirfield is. It's the only private crossing out of the four we have, the three others are public. We have one of the roads that is, and this is, this is Tuttle Greeley, just trying to get to, if I have, this is the closest one, that's at Route 9. We have a project going up at Route 9, essentially near Cross Road, that A.H. Grover will be doing this spring, that'll match up to the drainage piece for the railroad crossing, so that'll be incorporated into that project as well. That's why it'd be nice to kind of dovetail these projects, get them out sooner rather than later, so we're not tripping over each other. The other thing you have to remember, DOT is going to be rebuilding Route 9, and they're planning on starting in mid to late August, and if we wait to bid until July, we're going to be, you know, I don't know if we'll be out of the way. So, that's why the request is here before you tonight, and we will also get started with, you know, the work that hopefully we can help with on Muirfield. But again, where it's a private crossing, you can't use public funds for the private crossings, so other than trying to facilitate through our application and through federal railroad and through our congressional delegation, there's not much more we can do on a monetary standpoint.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions by the council?
I have one.
Allison?
So, my only concern through all of this is that now we have a sidewalk on Tuttle Road that we didn't have two years ago, and that sidewalk, how it junctions, I guess I'm really concerned about kids, and I just see people, they're going, they're using that sidewalk, they've got kids riding bikes, and that, I am just, I know that other towns clearly are doing this, but just how the crossbars go down, it doesn't block the sidewalk that's coming up the town, and then the one that's coming down, I know it just kind of ends in dirt to then cross over. Like, I looked at the Yarmouth ones, and the way their sidewalk goes, it goes within the barrier, so that, you know, if a little kid was riding ahead of their parent, that the barrier would like be coming down over the sidewalk, and the way ours is on Tuttle Road, that wouldn't happen. And honestly, like, that is, I drove around all of them, and I'm like, that is just the one crossing that makes me nervous, so I just don't know what our options are relative to the barriers there, or if the way the sidewalk goes, just, I know, two years ago, we didn't have a sidewalk on Tuttle, and now we do, and that's my, that is the one point that is making me nervous.
So, what we could do there is basically transition the sidewalk more into the paved shoulder ahead of time, so that it's more of a natural merge, if you will, back inside the crossbars. That's definitely doable without too much difficulty. We have looked at that, railroad has said the same thing. So, we are definitely aware of that.
There will still be alarms, you know, it's just not a train whistle.
I know, it's just that little, like, you watch the parents, and they've got like the little one that's on the little trike, and then the, you know, eight-year-old's ahead, and I'm just like, I can, oh, God, it just, yeah, that is like the one image in my head.
I know.
If we can do something to make that feel like it really is within the barriers, that would make me more comfortable.
Well, I had to go from Harrison to Portland the other day, and I tried to avoid Portland as much as possible, but anyways, going in 302, getting to Woodford's Corner there, and I noticed the railroad crossing there, and the professional way that it was done. And I look at what the work was done over here the last couple of years of our crossings, and I just, I just shake my head and dispolice that this, the quality is horrible, just absolutely horrible. You go with that thing with a truck, and it's, you're just, you're scraping yourself off the seam of the truck, and I don't know why we didn't get something like that from the-
We asked a thousand times, and the issue is the traffic, it's low-volume rural, and honestly, when they set the rails, the new rails, some of those rails are almost an inch and a half taller than the rails that are in the fixed set of rail tracks. So, we complained and complained and complained and got nowhere, and unfortunately, there's not a lot you can do, because they're almost dead flat across them, except where one rail is higher than the other rail, and trying to match that is impossible, and they won't put the mats down in place that they do in Portland. It's just not their practice. And we asked for years before they even did the project to do that, and we asked again when they were doing the project to do that, and they would say, absolutely not. So, I, they are a country unto themselves, because there's not going to be much working with them, and from what I understand, it's not going to get better.
Those crossings are a little better than they, when they first went in, though. They're like half as high.
Yeah. Mike?
I'm really disappointed in the Muirfield, just, like, Ronnie and I, you know, we're up north quite a bit, and there are private crossings on railroad tracks all over the place. No gates, no nothing, the line of sight isn't one-tenth of what Muirfield is. And for them to start throwing all these curveballs, I really, I'm very disappointed in the railroad. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman, I like, but Councilor Kopp has.
Okay, Ron?
I just have a question. I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward this, but I'm reading the motion, and it says, installation of barriers at each public railroad crossing and to establish quiet zones for all the rail crossings. Shouldn't it say three railroad crossings and not all?
It should say all public.
And that's what I'm trying to protect ourselves from, Bill, is so that-
Yeah, we're going to advocate for, yeah, we're going to advocate for all rail crossings in Cumberland, but the quiet zones that we can influence are only the public ones, and we will work hard at trying to get the private one as well, because I just, it's almost lunacy that that crossing, which Mike said, is very, much better protected than anything else we've seen.
And that's what I want to make sure, is that the $170,000, somehow they don't get a piece of this, because they're in Cumberland, and if you read the motion, it says for all rail crossings in Cumberland, which I know you can't use it on private crossings, but-
Right.
Publical, so.
So, if you add "public," we probably are protecting ourselves, so.
I can add that, Ronnie.
Catch, right. This is a public discussion, anybody have anything? Seeing none from the public?
Oh, there's one.
There is? Oh, yes, please, please, I'm sorry.
Hey, there, I'm Tom Simmons, 135 Longwoods, and thanks, Bill, for bringing this up. I'm a huge, huge supporter of this, as a neighbor of the railroad track with a 119-month- with one 19-month-old and another one on the way. The quieter, those intersections could be the better life would be. I don't think, I'm speaking exclusively for our family. But one question I had, Woodville Road, only one side of that intersection has the cement buildup. And I wasn't sure if that was unique to Woodville or if that was potentially something we might be able to integrate into our intersections, perhaps save a little money there. There could be plenty of reasons why we have to do it on either side. I just wasn't completely sure about that.
So in Falmouth, the barriers were installed prior to the second rails going in. I think they would have a real hard time getting away with some of those intersections that they have in place today. And I'm surprised the railroad hasn't revisited those because now with the double track, we also were told that anytime trains are parked on the double track, horns have to blow. And it's just a whole, seems like the list changes every year. So I think, yeah, that's a great question. But unfortunately, we're going to get stuck. And I think we have to build them out no less than 60 feet or else it's not going to be eligible for quiet zone.
Yeah. And then with the potential takeover next year, I think your urgency makes a lot of sense because who knows what will happen when Pan Am is out of the picture. And I can't recall what the acronym is, but whoever's buying.
What is the takeover? Who do you mention CSX is purchasing Pan Am? And that will happen probably within the next year.
Got it.
Largest railroad in the country.
So, and then, sorry, I think that was it. I thought I had another piece there, but, oh, this was it. Two years when we had this discussion, the loudest voice from this whole thing came from the folks living around Muirfield Road and the people in that community. And the gentleman had a decimal reader and was sharing just how loud that got. That obviously is going to be maybe the one crossing where we don't have the quiet zone. I don't know what opportunity there is to connect with that community or even what kind of sway there is there. But I think that would potentially be a good group to reach out to regarding the only stand in the way of this being a successful.
Well, it's not that they don't want it, Tom. It's that they basically have been told by the railroad that they're not eligible.
Even from like a private funding?
Not from a private funding or anything, that because they're a private crossing, they have no rights. So we are going to blow the horn going across your crossing and you don't have any say.
Okay.
So that's kind of what, and the absurdity of all is that from Portland to Brunswick, that would be the only crossing they'd blow the horn. Which makes those, it almost seems punitive to the towns around us. And they also shared, I shared with the council, that you can hear a train horn from seven miles away.
Right. We got three miles of track.
Yeah, we have three miles of track, so. It sounds like the horns are a heck of a lot louder because the pictures are a lot croqueter on my walls, so.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Tom, you want a motion? Yes, please.
Just to preface it, if this made sense a couple of years ago, which it did, with the usage that's quadrupled, I guess, it more than makes sense now. I move to authorize the use of year-end excess revenue funds not to exceed $170,000 for the installation of barriers at each public railroad crossing and to establish quiet zones for all rail crossings in Cumberland, all public rail crossings in Cumberland.
Ron, second. Further discussion by the council? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda.
One comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Tom, with a 19-year-old, another one on the way, there'll be no quiet zone. Forget it.
Give me my time, let me have it for the time being.
Why do you think he's here?
The whole again is good.
Brenda, new business? Want to do new business?
You want me to do new business?
Yeah, good. Yeah.
Mike?
Just one thing. I had my first COVID shot down in Scarborough Downs last week. Flawless. The medical, at Main Health, the medical personnel, they had support from the military, in and out, 25, 30 minutes. It is absolutely run the way it should be run. And it was good to get it out of the way, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Shirley?
The first thing I want to say is I just want to reinforce our gratitude to the Lands and Conservation Commission. They just are so professional in what they've done. And I've been on the council long enough to see a Lands and Conservation Commission that wasn't as highly functioning as they are. And to have the Lands and Conservation Commission and the Cumberland and Shabig Island Trust be so full of hard-working individuals, we are very grateful to all the people who volunteer. On Friday, I had a chance to, I was working on collecting some info from our Humans of Cumberland for our bicentennial coming up. And I met Donna Damon at the fire station to interview her, even though she's no longer a resident of Cumberland. I didn't want our friends on Shabig left out of that. And we had an opportunity to tour the fire station because she had never been inside. And it made me remember to tell the public that we have an incredible borrowing system available at the fire station. If you need a scooter or a wheelchair or crutches or you run out of test strips for diabetes or any number of things, blood pressure cuffs, those kind of things, you can go to the fire station and borrow them. They have had so many, they've had to give them away or ditch them. But they have a room that Everest has incredibly well organized. It's just like over several of the bays of the fire trucks and just incredible. So before you go and decide you need a brand-new scooter for a sprained ankle, consider borrowing one at the fire station. And Donna also delivered to me a letter that she would, to you, Tom.
Okay.
But I would like to read it.
Sure.
Okay, this is written on March 5, 2021, to Town Gruber, Cumberland Town Council Chair, Cumberland Town Hall. Dear Tom, the Town of Shabig Island Select Board voted unanimously to offer its congratulations to the Town of Cumberland on its bicentennial. Shabig's history is so intertwined with Cumberland's that we share in your celebration. Based on research at the Maine State Archives, we found that the people of Shabig had a role in the creation of the Town of Cumberland. It seems that North Yarmouth's representatives to the state legislature, Sturdivan and Russell, disagreed on the issue of secession. It may not surprise you that one of their final sticking points was what to do about Greg Shabig, sorry, Great Shabig Island with its 35 families. Neither town wanted to take on a maritime community because of the risk of a ship being lost and the potential of the widows and orphans becoming the responsibility of the town. They referenced the town's support of Crotch Island, now Cliff, widow of a mariner who had been lost at sea. The town was providing support for the widow and five children. Small slips of paper show creative ideas regarding the disposition of Great Shabig, including splitting the island down the middle. Finally, Ephraim Sturdivan announced that he was going to Shabig. It is thought that Sturdivan, a privateer during the War of 1812, had a professional relationship with some of the islanders. When he returned, he carried a petition signed by the vast majority of Shabig's eligible voters dated March 5, 1821, requesting that the island be included with the territory of the new town. Two weeks later, the very new Maine Legislature approved the creation of the Town of Cumberland. We share this footnote to the town's history to show despite Shabig's 2007 secession, our towns will always share a long and intertwined history. We, the Shabig Island Select Board, on behalf of the people of Shabig, wish the Cumberland Town Council, the town staff, and our Cumberland friends and neighbors our best wishes during your bicentennial celebration and in the years to come. Sincerely, Donna Miller-Damon. And for those of you who don't know, Donna Miller-Damon was the last town council representative for the island of Shabig before they seceded. So I want to.